Bonjour tout le monde et bienvenue pour suivre nous depuis l'Assemblée nationale. Aujourd'hui, bon matin. Aujourd'hui, bon matin, nous prépondrons travailler au dîter général à ce qui concerne le rapport d'auditeur général pour 2023 et nous préférer un public hearing avec différentes entités qui ont trouvé de sa rapport. Il y a pour autant pour moi préciser avant de commencer qu'il prenons compte qu'avant août, il y a un beau travail avec l'Assemblée nationale qui besoin fait. FPSC, il va aller nécessaire pour nous compléter nos cycles travail pour nous commencer nos travaux le rapport d'auditeur général pour 2023 qui avait dernier rapport pour me faire sinon azur avec tout le rapport d'auditeur général qui ne fait escala. Aujourd'hui, bon matin, FPSC par les autres avoir marqué aussi, nous prenons des membres qui pas absent, ils prennent cinq membres qui pour là. Ça est raison à cause il y en a les autres programmes travail, il y en a certainement un petit état qui manque de faire et prenons compte lifespan ça a une session l'assemblée qui positionne à peu près encore six mois. Alors si nous va aller nécessaire pour nous faire nos travaux, il y a un peu plus bon est possible. FPSC, il est même composé par banheur de l'Assemblée nationale, soit il y a tous les côtés partis politiques. Et moi-même, Sébastien Pilek, cheffe personne, il y a l'homme côté droite, on a Terence Mondon qui vice cheffe personne, il y a honorable Georges Rouman qui est membre de comité, honorable Corat Gabriel qui est membre de comité, honorable Churchill, honorable Sandy Arisou qui est membre de comité. Absent aujourd'hui, bon matin, il y en a Richard Labrose et honorable Churchill Gill. FPSC, ils sont la vie entre la constitution pays et Saint-Nigré de l'assemblée et me crois tout le monde déjà suivi dans le travail FPSC auparavant, mais pour moi déjà suivi, il y a comité qui fait son man hearings pour prédominalement live basé le rapport auditaire général et aussi basé le bannick quest qui fait le certain season qui soulève. Aujourd'hui, bon matin, nous avons présence auditeur général qui là avec nous, monsieur Gaminie Herat et nous aussi on a un soin aux auditeurs, Monsieur Ruth Ruth Franchet qui là avec nous aussi. Nous aussi, on a présence banheur de l'Assemblée nationale, on a député claque l'Assemblée nationale, Béla Alexandria For, on a membre de Shannon Sermon et on a Miss Miss Michel qui là avec nous aussi comme nouveau secrétaire comité et bien si, on a monsieur Jolaine qui tout le monde est connu avec banheur de son. On a auditeur général avec nous, la présence monsieur Vincent Pereira, Miss Nathaniel Julie et Miss Natasha Jane. Excuse nous pour s'arrêter avant commencer, mais nous allons nous valider avec sa réta après as we go along. Bon, on va faire Shannon présent faire procédé pour faire banheur de monde, faire dire soit le as it is the custom of a commercial travail FPSC et après on va continuer. Shannon ? Bonjour encore une fois et présent, on va commencer le travail qui va nous procéder aujourd'hui, bon matin. Cinq membres FPSC qui a signé et banheur de cité qui ont trouvé de sa rapport d'auditeur général et aujourd'hui, bon matin, pour commencer avec Attorney General's Office, nous prenons Terence Mondon qui peut prendre banheur de question. Pour bénéfice auditeur général, nous pour faire session en anglais présent pour qu'il y a comprendre banheur de question mais as much que nous capable, nous pour faire ici pour nous transiter banheur de quelque chose pour les demandes qui peut écouter. L'aller au pour qu'ils te comprennent qui banheur de question qui peut demander avec ça, on passe la parole avec honorable, merci.
Thank you Chair. Good morning everyone. Question addressed to Mr. Attorney General. First item, what was the issue raised by the auditor general is the overpayment of salary which was not recovered. And I would like to know what is the status of the recovery positions and those are the questions raised by the auditor general. What is the status of the recovery position as regards to the overpayment of salaries? And the second question, what attempts have been made to recover the amount overpaid? Has this proved to be fruitful? And the third question is if not, what are the chances of recovery of that amount?
First of all, at the outset, may I just mention the fact that this is audit for 2022? So none of us present here were there during this time. So with regard to this matter, the accountant, acting accountant...
Okay, I would like to set the record straight from very outset, right? For anyone that comes in front of this committee, whether you were here, whether you were not here, this was raised in the auditor general's report and it is the responsibility of the people who are in charge of that entity, whether you are here. So that excuse of not being here or none is irrelevant. What is relevant is the report was submitted to you, you were supposed to have some action done on it and you respond to the query as has been asked by honorable Modo.
Yes, with respect Chair, that was not an excuse, that was a fact, a statement. So I was not finishing my answer. So having checked the records, our latest finding is in fact this payment had been paid because the officer, the who had left had contacted officer who is here in our office to make the payment on behalf of that former officer. What I have been informed is the officer who is already there, working now has paid this, but there is issue with the receipt. So we had even spoken to Mrs. Vauw, who was the admin officer who was there at that time. And she also recalls that the amount may have been paid at that time. So it's a matter of this is since this happening about four years ago, retrieving the records from the bank and that is what we are attempting now. So from from the evidence available, I think I can see that the amount has actually been paid. But it's a matter of locating the evidence, the receipt, and that's where we are at now, at this point in time, honorable members and honorable Chair.
Thank you Chair. When you say may have been paid, this is not an assurance, we don't know if it's been paid, Mr. Attorney General.
So being a lawyer, without seeing the evidence, I can't say for certain, right? So that's what I'm saying. So I have spoken to the office, the office said yes, she did transfer the money to the account given by Miss Vauw. But only thing is till I see the receipt or bank reconciliation, I can't say for sure though. That is where I said, that is what, that is the stage we are at now, trying to get the the evidence of the payment.
Attorney General, you are aware that when when there is situations of overpayment in other departments and those departments, after going through the process, usually calls onto your office to do the, if there is a necessity for you to, for you to pursue the matter, to recover the money. You are aware how now this looks whereby you, your entity who pursues that money on behalf of government now has to show that you have been able within your own organization to pursue the money.
Definitely.
So in Creole, somebody would be... Also, the issue for us for us is to ensure that this query is dealt with.
Definitely.
Okay, so what assurances can you give us? That you can deal with this query, close the matter, so that it doesn't reappear on the report of the auditor general, but that is also conclusively dealt with. Can you give us any assurances?
Yes, so at the moment, it's a matter of now the checking the bank account to which the the money said to have been transferred in, I think, 2022, around that time or maybe 23 and confirming that the transfer has been made, the honorable Chair. So I think that is possible, so this matter should be, we should be able to close this matter.
One more question before I give to you to trouble, I saw. When did you come across this?
Me personally, I believe with the the report of the, because again, you did not want me to tell the fact, but then I took over from October. But after the report, only the it was mentioned in the report and therefore I have forwarded to the accounts and the HR officer.
When did you forward it to the HR?
I have to look at my emails, honorable Chair, I don't have that much of a good memory.
Did you forward it on the day the report was issued, a day after, two weeks after, three weeks after? Or did you forward it before coming to the committee?
Without looking at the records, I am unable to answer that question.
Thank you. Honorable Arisol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to everyone, especially those at home listening. Mr. Chair, I would like to go back to to the Attorney General in regards to the collection of the money. How much money has been collected up till now, which bank account and if your financial controller can certify that? You've told us that you're trying to to collect the money. The overpayment we're talking about, so you're giving us the assurance that something is being done. So can you assure us that some amount has been on the bank, has been transferred to the bank? How much the amount and which bank is that? And if by the end of this month, by the end of this year, everything will be sorted out? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, honorable Arisol.
No, because my my answer was, the answer I gave was, from what I have gathered, the amount, the total amount had been transferred to a to a bank account given by Mrs. Vauw to to one of the officers who are there. So that is why I said it's not about the part payment or anything, I did not mention about partly pay, part payments. I have to look at or find or trace the bank account to which the money was said to be transferred and then look at the evidence, the reconciliation statement or whatever the receipt, that is where we are at now.
Okay, we will, we will come back to this as we close, but we'll now move on to to the next issue, honorable Modo.
Thank you Chair. The next item is rental contributions which were not detected. The audit revealed that supposed to collect 1500 euros from the, you expatriates and the money was not collected for rental contributions, only 1500. And I don't understand why is it, what is the, what system you have in place? That you can't collect 1500 as per conditions of the expatriates, they have to contribute 100, 1500 for rental. And and the auditor say, have we, have you collected the amount from the two expatriates? What is the status of the of that issue?
Okay, thank you Vice Chair. So again, this I have to clearly say, now the question is how were the monthly deductions of 1500 as rental contribution omitted since the employee staff members were both extracted? So how it was omitted, I'm unable to say or one of the officers here unable to say, right? It's a matter, I think, who were employed in 2022 to answer. And with regard to this amount which was for 2022, no, there has not been a recovery even afterwards. Therefore, at the moment, what I have been advised is this amount, since it is an oversight by the by the administration, we would not be able to recover this, the 1500.
This is not, this is not acceptable. This is public money. And you, the, you hold the the office of Attorney General and we count on you to make sure that our money, the public money are taken care of. I don't accept, I don't accept that you can't collect, you can't collect the money. We're talking about the highest office, Attorney General office. I'm not, I'm not satisfied with the...
Attorney General? Yeah, you did not...
So what I have been informed is, sorry, Mr. Chair. Uh, so one of the employees, the, the contract has ended on twenty-sixth August, twenty twenty-four. So we will not be able to have any deductions from there. But then the other employee, uh, the instruction had been given to make the deductions from September twenty twenty-four, when it was, uh, uh, because I, I hope you, you know, this is about the rental contribution, uh, from the, from the employee. So this is the, the amount. For some reason, the previous administration has omitted to make the deduction, the rental contribution.
Thank you. Um, I want to go back to a point I made earlier. This issue about previous administration. You are, you are a lawyer by profession, correct? You are a lawyer. You're also on the, the, our top lawyer in this country because you're the Attorney General. And you, and you, of course, understand the constitution better than I do. Now, from my limited understanding of the constitution, it's simple, responsibility, responsibility, whether you're here or not. Now, it is your responsibility as the Attorney General to answer the queries in this report, whether you were here or not, just as it would be my responsibility, where I, Attorney General, to answer the queries in the report. Uh, you, you understand the point? But I think my concern is that highest officers, um, do not, um, do not take the time to go through these reports, rely on the junior staff to do so, and then unable to answer these questions. So I'm very sure that, uh, you will not agree with me, but I'm very sure that not enough work was done to go through the report at the highest level. It's to ensure, because this is the Department of Legal Affairs. We have to hold you to a different level of accountability than we hold others. Because at the end of the day, you are the ones that has to enforce, you are the one that has to enforce, to ensure accountability on other entities, by other entities. It's a job in the National Assembly, yes, but when it comes to the, to the legal aspect of it, it is your duty, your job. All right? So the, the, the response I was given to you by your, by your, um, uh, financial controller, right? Is correct. You, you, it has, they have stated in the report there will be deductions made in September twenty twenty-four. What I would like to confirm is, was that deduction made in September twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Yes. So the deduction was made in twenty twenty-four? For one employer. The other one has resigned.
Yes.
So there is, there is a question as to recoverability.
But he's an expat.
And has left the country.
Already left the country.
But that doesn't stop you from writing to that person and saying that you didn't make the deduction?
It's that way money.
Okay. All right, Honorable, Honorable Avisol, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. No, I wanted to understand is that one employee has left the country, and the other one stated in the, in the auditor's report, the contract in August twenty-four, and in other, in other case necessary, deduction will be made in September two thousand twenty-four. This is for the other employee.
Yes.
And to recover back the money that has not been paid previously to the same employee or?
No, the deduction started as of the month of September.
Is your microphone on?
Yes.
Yes. I'm okay with that, Mr. Chair. The deduction will start in September. But what about the previous month? Since the employee knew, and the edges office knew, that the necessary deduction were, were not taking place. So what has happened now?
It will start from twenty twenty-two. That's what she's saying. According to the response that you've given, the deductions will start from the initial date of employment, which is in twenty twenty-two. But you will start making those deductions in September twenty twenty-four. Now, which means you have to cover the period between twenty twenty-two and the period where you start the deductions. You see why you give, you've given an answer that is innocent? So basically, you.
From the report, we said that, um, for the second employee, instruction had been given to start deducting the Ministry's reign as of September twenty twenty-four. We did not say from twenty twenty-two. Yes.
According to responses in the management letter, which we have as a question here, okay? In the case of the employee for whom the deductions will start in September twenty twenty-four, the deductions will be considered from the initial date of employment since twenty twenty-two to date? Or are you only considering from twenty twenty-four?
We started from twenty twenty-four.
Okay. So Attorney General, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Should the deduction start from twenty twenty-two legally? Or can you legally enforce that the deduction should start in twenty twenty-two if it was an administrative oversight on your part, administrative error?
Uh, Mr. Chair, again, my, my difficulty at the moment is, I'm, I'm still not, I don't have the evidence of what really happened in twenty twenty-two. So whether there was a decision taken not to deduct or not, I, I have not seen anything. So that is why the answer I have, like with my accountant has prepared. We, we have taken steps to do this, take this initiative from, uh, September twenty twenty-four, which is the fair thing to do. And since we don't know, there are a lot of questions we don't know about the circumstances under which the deduction was not made. That is where we have not taken a decision to, like, deduct or recover the past dues.
So when will you be in a position to give us that information?
So at the moment, the decision is to deduct from September twenty twenty-four, given the circumstances.
So are you in a position to tell us how much you've collected from the deductions that you've made since September twenty twenty-four?
Sorry, Chair, I didn't follow you.
Are you in a position to tell us how much you've collected from the deductions made since twenty twenty-four?
No, it's a monthly deduction, the thousand five hundred from September two thousand twenty-four.
How much in total have you collected now?
But you had to multiply it by the months, no?
Not me, I don't have to multiply it. You have to multiply it and tell me.
So can you multiply and tell me? So thousand five hundred, when you multiply by eight, you get twelve thousand, Chair.
That's since September twenty twenty-four?
For eight months.
Okay. Now, if you take it from twenty twenty-two up to twenty twenty-four, how much is owed then? See, it's a simple mathematical exercise because.
I'm not very good in maths, my.
Ah, but yeah, it's, it's important. We, we become proficient in maths when it comes to these things.
So basically, Chair, my HR officer says something sensible because we don't know at the moment when the contract started. So we have to calculate from that date.
So that's the question I was trying to get you to understand, okay? You have to calculate from the date the person was employed, how much he was supposed to pay, he was supposed to pay, and then how much you've collected from twenty twenty-four, and whether you're going to seek dispensation for, I don't know, from Minister of Finance, which you, you're not going to collect it, or you're going to try and collect it. Without you doing the, doing the homework to establish the amount, the report will continue to flag this as an anomaly that needs to be resolved. Am I correct as, as Audit General? Auditor? Am I correct? Am I correct in saying that they have to do the calculation so that we know exactly how much is owed?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. And, uh, uh, yes, uh, I think we have to go back to the, get to the bottom of this issue and see when the contract was entered into. And from, effective from the contract date, the deduction should be made for, uh, for the duration. Uh, the person is, uh, 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 in employment and at stipulated rate, whatever the stipulated rate in the, in the contract. So I'm not quite sure which date, which month, and which year the contract started. So they have to, uh, they have to go back and work on the, on the, on this case to determine how much is actually due. Thank you.
Okay, so just to, just to close this matter again, um, before I, I will give one member one point on this. What you need to do is you need to go back. And I think it's, 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 it's very commendable that you've started the deductions from September twenty twenty-four. That's already a start. We appreciate that. But we would appreciate you go back and then do the calculation that we know how much in total, the two in comparison, and then you've got one start that has left. If that can be done on the part of your HR and your financial controller, then that will provide additional information that you can give in your next management letter when the next audit is performed on your, on your office. And that will show what conclusive actions you are doing to tackle this. Because you don't want to appear in the table at the back of the Audit General's report that says, um, uh, the matter is still persisting. How much you're going to collect is going to be dependent on whether you can have access to those people. But the fact that you've started the collection in twenty twenty-four is already a good sign. Uh, Honorable Rame? And then we move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, my question has partially, um, answered, but it just, what do you have in, in place at the moment to avoid this, um, rental deduction of not collecting happen again? What do you have in, in, in the system at the moment? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Attorney General?
Okay, so thank you for your question. Um, when I took office in twenty twenty-three, this is the first thing when we are, um, employing expatriate. It's the first thing that we need to make sure. Um, we make sure that we inform them that there's a monthly fifteen hundred deduction, and it is being put on the payroll. So for every expatriate now on the payroll, the monthly rent deduction is being, is being done moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Honorable Moda?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, the next item is, uh, use of goods and services. An audit revealed that there was one instance, uh, a payment of seventy-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five rupees effected.
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Which one are you looking at?
Seventy-three thousand? Yeah, seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. Uh, without the requisite, uh, three quotations. And according to your replies, you stated that, um, the triggers were not sought as the supplier was, was selected based on the proven reliability and ability to meet the specific requirements. What do you know? No, usually we, we, if you're going to go for pre-selection of one supplier, but you should have a, a document in stating that, uh, this is the supplier, and this is why we, we, we choosing that supplier. But the audit didn't find anything. So why, why did, why did you go with that supplier in the first place?
Thank you, Honorable Moda.
So thank you for the question, Acting Chair. So here, the, we were, we were able to, uh. Can you explain? Yeah. I'll let the accountant explain.
Okay. Um, we were able to get a memo, um, of, provided by the previous administration whereby they said they made the, they, uh, made the, the purchase based on past experience. So this is why they did not sort all the quotation.
Not good. I mean, it's, it's, it's in the accounting manual. It's, you need three quotations unless you have a written agreement saying that why we choosing this supplier. So what is, what is being done now? To make, what steps you taken to make sure that there, this doesn't happen again?
No, we are actually following the procurement, uh, procurement procedure whenever, um, we are making a purchase.
Because to be making, because I'm, I'm, not because I'm being questioned by you, but for me, as a government servant, I'm very particular with regard to handling taxpayers' money. So this is just my six months in office. And I'm ensuring that the financial regulations are followed. But only thing is, I have to take things at a time. But with regard to the purchases, definitely three quotations should be there unless you can have an explanation why you can't have three quotations. So that would be there on record, on, on, on the file or even in an email. So from, uh, your question is what we are doing now, that is what we are doing now, because there would be an explanation if there are no, it's not possible to have three quotations. And I can give you that assurance to the Honorable Chair and to this committee. I'm very particular with regard to using taxpayers' money.
Okay, hang on, um, Honorable Avisol?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go back to the answer that you gave in regards to the memo. The memo came from where? From whom? Because whenever you need an advice, for example, on these, on these issues, it should come from the Minister of Finance.
It's an internal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. It was an internal memo.
It was an internal memo?
Meaning.
For the procurement? You, you finished or?
No, Mr. Chair, I want to know internal memo from where? Signed by who? A financial controller, a manager?
The HR assistant.
HR assistant. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Can we ask what was procured?
So it was for dismantling and transportation of furnitures from National House to the Link Building.
Hang on, um, this was to do what?
Dismantling and transportation of furnitures from, uh, the National House to the Link Building.
Okay, so dismantling and transportation of furniture from National House, the Link Building costs seventy-three thousand?
No, I think you are, um, there's two question. There's one quotation not sorted.
Do you have the invoices? Um, Ruth, can you clarify? What is the amount for exactly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, all members present, the panel and all who are listening. Um, in fact, the payment was in relation to, like it has been rightly said, for the reassembling of furniture and transportation. It was indeed for seventy-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five rupees, which according to our records was paid via, um, payment voucher zero three seven P two two zero two two four, dated the eighteenth of July, twenty twenty-two.
Hey, Attorney General's office, clarifying.
So, Chair, your question with regard to whether we have the invoice at this moment, though we have not brought the invoice.
What, what did you pay eighty-three thousand?
Seventy-three thousand.
Sorry, seventy-three thousand, uh, eight hundred, eight hundred and seventy-five rupees effected on eighteen zero seven twenty twenty-two. What was that paid for exactly?
So to the question, uh, Honorable Chair, this is with regard to the reallocation because there were a lot of furniture in the National House building, which was, which were, which had been transported to the Link Building. So I'm sure there would have been multiple trips. So there, only the letter says, uh, the particular person was chosen because he's the one of the most reliable person in the business. He had resources and workforce needed for the job. He could be trusted with our offices after working hours, and the job was done properly and at a reasonable time. So this is what the memo says. So I'm sure this would be the justification they have.
I'm very sure he could be the best and the most experienced, but this. I'm very sure he could be the best and the most experienced, but in the absence of three quotations, how do we ascertain whether or not he is? Do you understand my problem?
I understand.
My predicament?
I understand.
I need to see the value for money unless it was an internal procurement, unless the law had changed to allow you to procure at eighty four thousand, at seventy three thousand without seeking the available three quotations, but I don't think it had, no, not yet. So the question which begs itself, in the absence of the three quotations, how do you ascertain them? And the fact that you didn't do the three quotations is now an issue? You will, you will not be the first entity to do that. I say this with no, not with, not with any, any, any measure of amusement. That hasn't sought the three quotations, not over the past ten or fifteen years as well. Okay. Attorney, Auditor General, please, I've got the two of you. Would you like to reflect on it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to add on that, yes, at the time, the, the transaction took place, the, the, the regulations were that you would go for three quotations for purchases over, purchases of good or services over fifty thousand. So because of the threshold, because this exceeds the threshold, we have pointed it out that although it may have been the best available source which they could use, the, perhaps the competitiveness of the, of the price should have been checked with regard to two or three quotations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so this is going to be the final word on this issue. This is not acceptable. It's not acceptable, and we hope that even though the law has changed to allow you certainly internally for procurement, you still need to seek value for money and ensure that you're getting the best service from the person involved. People have got, have lost their jobs on not seeking three quotations in the past. So this is the Attorney General's office was, was to ensure that everybody stays in line when legally it is necessary for you to do so. So you held to a high standard, and we do not want any entity coming here believing that not seeking three quotations, even when you have dispensation internally for such amounts. It doesn't make sense.
I can't agree more. I totally agree with you, Chair.
So what we will want from you is we want the invoices for the different, for whatever was, was procured for seventy three thousand eight hundred and seventy five, the number of trips that were made. All this information has to be tabulated and placed in there so that it goes against the, not goes against, but it supports the audit finding in a way. So we know that things were done in a certain way. It doesn't matter whether it was in twenty twenty two. So that nobody from now on who moves from one building to the next decides to pay whoever they want to pay to move from that building for assembling furniture decides that we're not going to get value for money.
Yeah, it all depends on the reasons, Mr. Chair. I, I totally agree. So if we can discover the documents, we'll see whether the documents are.
Okay, but we, we will come back to you and probably will even visit you before the end of the year because you're close enough for us not to have to drive and we can walk. So we can come see you and see how, how things are done and how your staff is as well. Okay, so I'll go back to Honorable Moda so that we can continue with this.
The next audit item is overpayment of subsistence allowance. And according to the audit, they observed that there were two instances where you were paid for subsistence allowance. And, and the question is, and recognize that you acknowledged your overpayment and what I would like to know, when, are you, are you all new to the office? At the time of audit, were you, were you employed with the Office of Attorney General? Or you were, you were new? Because I see that what is coming out is, is simple, it's supposed items that you were not aware that the head of delegations, how this was paid, how many people should form a head of delegation. Tell us, why is it that this oversight?
So again, Honorable Vice Chair, I cannot, I don't have the ability to read somebody else's mind. So this decision again was taken, even though you're happy or not, by the, those who were working at the office before our tenure. So to your, to, I am unable to answer your question because for some reason, they have given the, this, we agree it's an overpayment, but the why, I don't think it's fair for you to even ask me because I without, because none of us were there.
Are you familiar with the provisions of the accounting manual, the rules and regulations when it comes to accounting, public accounting? Are you familiar?
Of course, we have to be, we have to follow the PIS and the public's manual as well, so and other regulations. So whatever the accountant he's doing now, they are following the regulations and the manual. That we can see, that I can give you an assurance.
What is, what is the status, as the auditor wanted to know? What is the status? Are you adhering to the procedure?
That's what I said just now, yeah.
So you can prove, you can prove to us that you are adhering to all the procedures in place?
In time, but it would be our documents, we are doing it not to prove to you, but then to see that we do the right thing. And therefore, let's see what the audit finds from the, the approach or the procedures we are following, and then you can see.
Yeah, I want to, I want to go back to one, to an answer which you gave, that you cannot read the minds of the persons that were there before. I'm, I'm not satisfied with this answer because I'm, we're not here for, to be mind readers. What we're here for is to reflect on the, on the issues that have been identified in the auditor general's report and to make sure that every entity that has to appear before the public in this way understands the responsibility which is given to the office which they hold. I understand, I have to understand the responsibility of the office which I am given, the job which I am given, which is to chair this committee to ensure that that money, once it is identified as not being in line with financial regulations or public service orders, I have to ask these questions. Okay? Now, when I identify that this is the case, so let's say any entity, government audit committee decides, identifies that this is the case, they would then send a letter to the Attorney General's office to say, okay, we have identified that such and such instances have happened that are, that are not in, in line with financial instructions, financial regulations, and therefore, we ask the Attorney General to start legal proceedings to do recovery of the money that is in question, correct? That is usually how it happens. You're supposed to ensure that recovery. Now, the question that was asked of you was a very simple question, okay? None of you say you were there. I understand that. We understand that nobody was there when something wrong was done. Everybody will be there when something right is being done. That's fine. But the problem that I have is that somebody has to answer for it. Now, we, it may not be material in terms of us asking these questions, but it is material in terms of ensuring that not just you, but other entities. Now, if you allow one entity to do that, and then you allow ten, you allow twenty, you allow thirty entities to do that, very soon there is a breakdown in the discipline that people have to follow the financial instruction. So therefore, when it is identified, we have to push for it. I hope you understand that. Now, the question that was asked of you, okay, and the response it was given by you to the auditor general was that you acknowledge the overpayment, and in your reply state that moving forward, you will ensure that the criteria and the circular will be met, not that you were not there, not that, not that none of you were there, but that you acknowledged the overpayment. So if you just answer, we acknowledged the overpayment, there was an over, it was done, so acknowledge it. Now, what you have to do is to ensure that it doesn't happen again, which you are doing, which you're saying that you've done, but also ensure whether or not there is an issue of recoverability of the subsistence allowance that was given. If there's no issue of recoverability, if it's not recoverable, it's not recoverable. You understand? So that at least we're clear on what we, we have to do. Move on to the next question, Honorable.
Okay, the next item is transport management. Vehicle log, log books not maintained properly. Can you tell us what is, what is being done to ensure that you maintain the log books for transport?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. At the moment, we have one officer designated as a transport officer, who is the assistant of the Budget Management System. And we are taking steps to ensure that the logs are maintained.
Okay, next question. Good. Honorable Avisul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the answer given to us, I wanted to ask a question in regards to the Attorney General's office. It has been existed for quite a while now. Were there all these being implemented there? For example, what you just said is that about an officer for transport management? Was there one there before you came at the office just to deal with the transport management? There were no officer at that time when you, you were, you, you went to work there as a new AG?
There was, when I went there, there was a transport officer, but what you're saying is, the question was, what have we done now?
Yes.
So when you say now, probably would mean af, I mean, after a particular point. So I did not say about when I started or when I not started. Now we have a transport officer. That doesn't mean we did not have a transport officer before, but we have a transport officer who is doing this job now.
Doing his job now?
No, this job of maintaining the logs at the moment.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney General, Honorable Moda.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I would like to, to know what, what you're doing when it comes to the, the items revealed by the auditor general when it comes to the non-financial asset, what, what you're doing to, to ensure that you have asset verification numbers and you have non-physical inspection of assets? What, what are you doing in your office to, to ensure that you're taking care of all the assets, all the, the physical verification and everything?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
So, thank you, Vice Chair. We, we at the moment, again, I don't want to say this as an excuse, but we don't have admin officer at the moment. So that is, that is a difficulty we are facing because all, all the admin work is done by Ms. Jean, who is here, and there's one assistant. And then the account is handled by Ms. Julie and then another assistant. So with regard to this, even I saw that when I took over about the, the assets, because you see, we had to move from the old building because of an issue to this new building. And there were basically damaged assets, but they were simply brought to the office. And we are in the process of trying to sort of identify because some are very old, we can't identify the, the, the numbers, but we are somehow trying to see where we can reconcile the records and see, again, what I'm saying is, I'm very particular about being accountable with regard to assets.
Do you have an asset register?
Can you answer this?
Who is populating the asset register?
Okay, so the fixed asset register is being managed by the HR assistant now, yes.
Now, in terms of managing the fixed asset register, is that the same fixed asset register or, or, is that digital?
Yes.
Is it the one from the ICT?
Yes.
Okay, we saw NBS introduce one, which is an open source assets register. Maybe it might be useful for you to talk to National Bureau of Statistics, given what we saw that they had, they had established, that might be useful for you. They use an open source software, open source system that is available, that you can use and that can help you, and it's easy to manage, and you will know the movement of each asset alongside the one which is given by the ICT, because the one which is given by the ICT doesn't give you much leeway in terms of moving things around. You can input things, but then manually after the input. Okay, so what we would like you to do now is you to, for you to conduct a review of that fixed asset register internally and then check how you are going in terms of managing those fixed assets. Are you coding your assets now as you buying them? Since you moved to a new building, I suppose you have new computers, you have new printers, you have new stuff?
Yes.
Did you code these assets?
Right now, it's being done.
Okay, if I, if I were to leave this building now and go to your office now, will I see codes on the printers, the computers, the chairs being, being, being put there? Are they being tagged? Attorney General? The question is for you, Attorney General, not for your staff.
Well, because I, I work with my staff, Honorable Chair, but what I'm, what I, what the answer is basically, we are in the process of doing it, and I have told you, we are actually.
The question that I ask is simple. If I were to leave this building now, if I were to leave this building now, 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 you've moved to a new building, we've just given you a new budget, and in each entity's budget, we put something, we put for acquisition of IT equipment. We give every entity, every year, this assembly gives every entity every year, over fifty thousand, sixty thousand rupees to acquire IT equipment, right? And you've acquired a new IT equipment. Am I correct? To move to a new building, am I correct? Now, if I were to leave this building today, now, and go to your building, will I see asset tags on your new equipment? Yes or no?
Maybe some, maybe less, I'm saying the process is going on.
How come a new asset is not tagged?
Because they are, they are basically working on the whole asset register, Honorable Chair.
Mister Attorney General, one thing that I do understand are asset registers, correct, AG? Yes, Attorney, Auditor General, you have something to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Reflecting on the asset register being used, which is prescribed by DITC, and the limitations. You know very well that there are limitations and the use of that is also limited to one person. This has created a lot of problems. And if you, you just ask if they, because when the person assigned to get access to this software is on leave, let us say on maternity leave, another person cannot get access to this. So this has created a lot of problems and the delays in update in the register, including in my office. So this is an issue that we have to take up with Minister of Finance and, and get this resolved for once and for all, so that one, more than one person get access to this. And, and if it can be run on network, it will be even better because then the, the from room-wise inventories can be put into the, 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 the system. So I, I'm afraid that if we were to recommend the use of another software, then we have to, we, we have to take it through the Minister of Finance and get, get them to endorse it because at the end of the day, financial regulations and, and the instructions are formulated then and disseminated by them. So, so if, if the software is, is more flexible, I would certainly, certainly appreciate the use of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, but you see, my, my point was not that. My point is you can still have your DICTI assets register. Internally, you need to have a mechanism that makes sure that once you buy one of these laptops or this tablet, you can follow where it goes. Now, the, now, NBS has tablets which it has to give to the field officers, conduct surveys and whatnot. So they've got an internal system, but that's not their system. The system is the one which you have, which is the ICT. But irrespective of system, all assets must have an asset tag, correct? And all assets must be recorded as it goes in, correct? And you need to have a system, HR system, where you record what you've bought. So if you spent fifty thousand rupees buying IT equipment from one supplier, we need to have a record of that, correct? Question was that, do you have the tags, which obviously you don't? So my point now is can you get the tags on the asset? Can you record the asset? Can you have a physical recording of the asset as well so that you know what you've bought, so that at all times the office is aware of how much money it's spending on IT equipment? Because quite frankly, looking at the number of IT equipment that goes for write-off, we're considering it that it is quite, it is a big loss for the government. Not now, but it's been the case for a long time. The buying of IT equipment, acquisition of IT equipment, and there's no checking, no verification, at the end of the day, you don't know what you're buying, the quality of what you're buying, so this is an issue for us. So can we get that sorted out?
Definitely, Chair. Again, thank you for that. But what I want to say is, the concerns you have, I, I see the merit in it, and I, I fully agree with you with regard to the need to do this. But only thing is, what I was trying to explain is, given the, the, the resources we have, it, it is taking some. But only thing is, what I was trying to explain is, given the resources we have, it is taking some time even to get what I want to get. So that's where we are. We are going to have the registers sort of completed. So at the moment, their target is by July twenty twenty-five to see that the registers are completed. So let's see, I'm hopeful that we can get there.
We'll be writing to you, and we'll be coming soon to your office. So we will have an opportunity to talk at length in your own surroundings, where you are comfortable to tell us everything about what's happening right now within the Attorney General's chambers. Honorable Mondo?
Yes, thank you, Chair. There was an issue with the missing invoice, which amounts for eighty thousand, eighty-four thousand seven hundred rupees. And we would like to know what happened with that invoice. And Audit wanted to know if only when they flagged that the invoice was misplaced.
Yes, I think subsequently, we have managed to locate the invoice, and was it submitted to Audit or?
It was.
Yes.
Okay. The question is not that. The question is, how come there was that problem whereby? The invoice number is zero three seven P one eight zero two five one dated twenty eight zero five twenty eighteen, raised for ninety-four thousand six hundred, but total value was nine thousand nine hundred. Difference of eighty-four thousand seven hundred, no documented explanation provided. Then it was found. So, Qod, what Audit is trying to say, there is a problem with the record-keeping and the accounting within the Attorney General's chambers. That has to be resolved. It's not that the money is missing. The invoice was found, but it was found only after Audit flagged it. We can't wait for Audit to flag all of this, because an actual sum might go missing until Audit comes and flag it. You understand? That's why we need to know what measures you have put in place to ensure that this doesn't happen again. You feel free to ask one of your staff to respond.
I'll let my staff answer the question. And Chair, I have to also, I was supposed to be at court at nine thirty.
Yes, you were also late to the meeting as well.
I know five minutes, again, because another meeting, unexpected, Chair.
Yes, but we gave you a summons from last week.
I know, but that was, as I said.
You were duly informed that you were to appear before this committee.
It was an unexpected urgent meeting, so that's why I'm saying, I'm sorry for that.
No, we gave you a summons for this committee meeting, for this committee hearing. You were duly informed beforehand that you should be present here at nine o'clock. You were the one that was late.
Ten minutes, but now it's ten past ten, Honorable Chair. So I thought this was a twenty-minute session, if I was told. So we have spent almost like how many minutes now?
But if your entity had not dealt with the responses that had been brought to it by the Audit General's chambers?
But we'll see, again, as I said, it's a court matter, so it's now already at nine thirty. I have thought I can leave at ten, I just wanted to tell you.
When is your court matter?
Nine thirty.
We have some time, you can just walk there. Yeah, one more question, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I believe you understand our role as the oversight of the Office of the Attorney General, all the public entities. And we want to see entities really take care of our money. So my question is related to revenue. And you shift to a new system, so what are the benefits from moving to the new system? We would like to know. And with regards to the bank account. So according to Audit, why were the chequebooks used to effect payments not accounted for in the Accountable Document Register? And pre-numbered receipt, it was not done? Can you elaborate on that, what happened?
Basically, the AG has a bank account for retainer fees, whereby you keep retainer fees, and that's a commercial bank account. It's not a treasury single account. Now, according to the collection for twenty twenty-two, total two hundred and eighty-two thousand rupees, okay? Now, you were supposed to have moved to a new digital system, according to this, but there were chequebooks used to effect payments not accounted for in the Account Document Register. So you just need to clarify this for us, please, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Chair. I'll let the accountant clarify that.
For the digital system, it was for the collection of cash going in the fourteen zero one account. That's for the Gazette.
Yeah.
As for the commercial bank, it's still being done in manual receipt. So there's two funds being collected. There's the Gazette, which goes in the fourteen zero one, and then the retainer fee that goes in the commercial bank account.
I understand that, but for fourteen zero one, there's a perfect view of accountability. It is treasury managed, that's fine.
The revenue question was in regards to?
No, there's two questions. There's one question in regards to revenue one, and then the other one is relation to the chequebooks. Now, the chequebooks are not used for fourteen zero one. Fourteen zero one is a government account. We're talking about the account used for the retainer fees here. That's where the chequebooks were used for, yeah.
So previously, we wondered why they, again, they did not enter the chequebook. And then for the receipt also, we just followed the same. Once we took, this was previously managed by the admin, so they still are using the the same receipt book, so we are.
Dear Attorney General, can you answer the question? Are you aware of an account that is used to collect retainer fees from public enterprises?
Is, is parasitic account, yes.
You're aware, okay. How much is there in the account now?
At the moment, no, I don't have the bank statement.
When was the last bank statement taken from that account?
Mid-January. Mid-January.
This mid-January?
Yes.
Can we have a copy of that bank statement forwarded to us? Who manages that account? Who authorizes payment from that account?
Authority is the AG and there are the.
Okay, but if the AG is authorizing payment from that account, how come you don't know the balance from the account?
Sorry?
If you authorize payments from the account?
Yes.
How come you don't know the balance from the account?
Honorable Chair, my constitutional role is, I hope you understand.
I do understand.
So that is why I have accountant in my office. So therefore, if I take the role of an accountant, I'll be able to tell you everything what you're asking me now, offhand. So therefore, the answers to these questions depend on what information is brought before me. So therefore, I have to be reasonable. Because the thing is, at the end of the day, what I'm saying is now, there is a bit of a hostility here. We are on the same page. We are trying to protect the taxpayers' interest. So let's do this in a harmonized manner, Honorable Chair. So don't think I'm like your enemy. So I'm also trying to do my job to see that we basically ensure accountability to the taxpayers. With that, we are on the same page. So let's work on that.
Nobody here thinks of you as the enemy, or as anyone here trying to be hostile towards you. But however, you have to understand that your answers have to reflect you taking, what we want is you taking responsibility for your organization as it befits every single CEO or anybody who's in charge of an organization. You are one of the most important offices in the land, and we rely on you personally, and everyone here will say this. We rely on you to ensure that you are held above reproach in every single matter or instance.
I will ensure that I not disappoint you.
We are put in a position whereby we have to hold you to a higher standard than we hold other people, because you understand the legal ramifications of anything that is lacking or missing. You don't understand that?
Definitely.
Whereas opposed, another CEO might not have the same legal understanding of the situation as you would.
But it's not an excuse, still.
Exactly, but exactly it's not an excuse, because what we want is, from the first instance when you got here, your first answer was that this wasn't your administration, it was previous administration. What we are trying to make everyone understand is that whether it is your administration or not, it is your responsibility now. There is an account that is put for retainer fees, all right? My viewpoint is that the person signing the checks needs to know how much is coming in the account and how much is going in the account at all times, for a purpose of accountability. I know you have an accountant. When it comes to our personal account, what's in our bank account, in the bank, in our private bank account, we all know what's in there. There's no hostility here. So I hope you understand that there is no hostility here. The only issue is that, what you have to understand is that we are working together to ensure that there is accountability in public money. So I hope you understand that. I hope you understand that there is no hostility. Now, you have explained that you need to be at the court at ten thirty?
No, nine thirty, already late, but again, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
We want to speed up the process, yeah. So Chair, again, this account, we are not making regular payments, so, because I think the so the last time it was used, if I remember correctly, was to pay a bonus to all the staff last year. So this is not used every month, or that is the issue. Like, I understand your concerns or the sentiments you are making, but only thing is, given all the other commitments, at the moment, I don't have the documents with me to assist you, that's what I'm saying. But, but I'm assuring you, we are on the same page, and I'm going to ensure that, as you said, we actually, as the AG's office, set a standard to other entities. That's where I'm going towards, right? So only thing is, I can't make changes overnight, I'm not a magician, but I am getting there. I am very concerned of ensuring that we are accountable to the taxpayers' money, to the rupee we are using. So that assurance I can give you. In that regard, we are on the same page.
This is where we should have started all along.
I was trying to explain to you, right?
This is where we should have started, not on pushing responsibility, but taking responsibility. This is what I wanted to hear. Now we're better. I mean, you see, there's no hostility. As long as we get to this page, we're fine. So what I would ask for that account is, I would like the latest balance on that account, what was paid out of it, and how much has been paid into it, and what two transactions happened in the account. Because the issue is that, at the end of the day, you will use this account for things, that includes staff bonuses, and then has to be audited. Exactly, so staff welfare will have to be audited, because you have the luxury, not luxury, you have the opportunity of using an account for your staff welfare, whereas some of the entity does not have that opportunity. But it doesn't mean your staff does not deserve that, we understand that, but we just have to make sure that we are in line, okay? But with that, we will end with the Attorney General's chambers. We thank the Attorney General for meeting with us, and we hope you understand that this is the national assembly. This is where we exercise oversight and scrutiny, and there is no hostility with AG. We wish you all the best in the rest of your work and all the best in your endeavors, and we wish your staff all the best. We will be visiting your office very soon to check on some of the issues that we have flagged, and thereon, we can move forward on other issues. Thank you, Attorney General, and we wish you a pleasant day.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and the members, and again, sorry for being late for about five minutes. It was beyond my control.
You were ten minutes later, thank you.
Sorry, ten minutes, beyond my control. Thank you.
So, good morning. We have with us the Sessios Infrastructure Agency, and for the benefit of the public out there, we just have to Bonjour tout le monde, nous sommes avec nos Sessios Infrastructure Agency. Et pour bénéficier de la publique, il allait au, nous regardent l'asance lui-même, nous pas pour regarder son bidet, ma pose etc. Mais nous prenons un question là, qui sort des rapports Audit Général, EA twenty-two, ten, two point four one, l'opace dix-neuf. Pour où staff comment se regarder, après il va répondre sa question. Qui m'a eu pour procéder aujourd'hui, par la bitine, nous on a un membre qui peut être nous trouver une question. Sacme, mais il gagnait, il gagnait actif, pour eux demandent bonne question. Mon fini introduit, mon mère fait ici, bon matin, moi pour faire, il encore. Mais c'est moi, moi va donne, moi va introduire, antici de devant nous, non, non, Monsieur Dites Cha, qui, chef executive, l'asance de plastique. Non, non, Miss Samia Agatine, qui directait HR, et non, non, Miss Anna Rose Jilly, qui senior admin officer. Bande de monde qui l'a comparé, Audit Général est avec nous. Mais seulement nous sans Audit, poussant antité, et non, non, Miss Wendy Ziallo, okay, qui l'a avec nous. Et nous manstres la SAB National, il paraît y a pas qui nous gagne, je ne parle pas, Mamzelle Cherry, Ranga Sami, qui aussi a secreté. Le nous, le nous comité, so F P S, ça c'est non, non, cinq, on a quatre travailleurs, la SAB National, voilà. Cinq avec Sam, Chek, Betsi, Porte, Che, Travis, qui Betsi nous manque, Porte. Miss Luke French, elle est cool avec nous. So Monsieur Cha, nous pourra dire que l'on a une question avec honorable main. Moi, on va voir tout ça, ben concernent le rapport, et on va répondre à ce que vous avez. Honorable main, please.
Merci, Monsieur Chair, bonjour, c'est au éco panel. N'a dit que le question, dans le paragraphe six, la SAB, excesive livres balance. Audit, les in regard du payroll, il ne voit six cas, pour travailler, il y en a plus qui compte des jours qu'il a loin, il permet. Alors, c'est mon question, mais devant aussi, est-ce qu'il est capable d'un détail, le qui, action, qu'ils ont pris, pour faire descendre, bon jour, qu'on est, qui, bon staff, qui, exit quand des jours, tiens, non, pour l'année deux mille vingt-trois. Permettez-moi, Monsieur Chair, mais ça, l'autre question, une autre question qui est le cas, staff, tu prends cause, qui tu veux maintenant pas? Et ça, tu six point, des cinq jours en plus. Alors, c'est mon question, et on vit qui tient là, un staff, qui tu prends ça, cause en plus, est-ce qu'il y en a maisy en place aujourd'hui? Pour paître, et ta situation arrive encore. Merci, Monsieur Chair.
Merci, honorable, vos questions. Quel phrase, pour moi commencer, il y a un document qui m'a tiré, juste, on s'est fait un copie, sorry, tiens, non. Ce qu'a fait pour tout le monde, juste pour current state avec cette évidence, là, ça qui nous fait so far. On dit, on aura obtenu, tiens, non, c'est un sex staff, l'affaire deux mille vingt-deux, qui tient à plus qui, quarante des jours, cause. Aujourd'hui, non, non, huit, il augmentait, oui. Seulement, non, non, possédant place pour nous cabiller avec sa situation. Normalement, nous fait bon staff, submit bon livres plan. Livres plan, il a généralement pour anti-l'asance. Seulement, nous demande bonne spécifique documentation, soit du côté bon staff, qui a plus qui, quarante des jours, pour nous faire, pour nous faire si, pas dans l'année, il est hein. Seulement, that said, il y en a des staff qui a climat même avec nos procurement manager, qui aussi aidé avec bon checks, le bon pose, qui, il y a quatre plus. Pour sa, sa officier, qui, qui paye le côté finance, il y a un type à cause. pour, pour sa, sa, sa officier, qui, qui paye le, le côté finance, il y a un type à cause son atti, son ouvrage, nous n'a pas vraiment dit mon qui peut me remplacer lui. So il y en a permission qui nous nous donner. En même temps, nous peut travailler pour nous faire des hand, il est porté pour noter pour dire ça K I N qui nous hérite, laissez à vous former, ça n'a plus qui sans vous at the time. So far, nous ne verrons, I believe right now, il est seventy-six, si moi pas trompé, vous konzer, seventy-two. Il y a quelque, il y a quelque chose qui peut dire, doucement, doucement. Seulement avec more than hundred days, définitivement, il paraît quelque chose qui overnight, nous pourra donner tout ça konzer. Et il y en a bonne possession, parle mon dit, non non, non non situation, que nous écris bande staff, il a bonne document qui nous, qui nous séquillait. Nous fait aux tout, tout bande qui, qui en a plus qui quarante jours, tout j'ai besoin submit un plan pour l'année, pour faire des hand, pas j'ai fait l'année passée, et graduellement il peut dire.
Merci, Honorable, on a vos questions. Allez, Honorable Barisol.
Merci Monsieur Chair, bonjour Monsieur Cha avec l'équipe. Moi t'en vais ici demander le temps, on fait, on on la réponse, on dit, pour dire tiens on staff quelquefois qui, qui outil besoin, ça l'état. On n'a pas les autres. Est-ce qu'il tient condition qui outil fait avec lui, pour qui est capable de travailler avec un pense konzer? Et puis son konzer pour gagner payé, au lieu de gagner rende son konzer, bien pour style masse, pareil tous les autres travailleurs, le son konzer qui devrait, et tout ça qui s'y place, il tombe. Merci Monsieur Chair.
CEO.
Okay, merci Honorable. Honorable, il y en a, c'était documentation qui nous avons écouté, tu as pour nous expliquer ça, ça car à cause of this, il rollait tu as plus de take-up pour faire si, pour dire, dimon, n'a pas excessive leave. Un conversation qui nous caïnt, il est pour nous, c'est réduit ça, over the coming years. Ça tient qu'il deux-mille-vingt-trois, deux-mille-vingt-quatre, and the next two years. Avec plan qui non non nous expecté, bah il a fait l'année pour scène, et pour arriver with une cent-quarante des jours. So, seulement, en même temps, les, l'opportunité divine, il parle l'année passée, que tu n'es ce qu'il est pour dimon qui tient excessive leave, pour autres cab, vendre sa konzer. Nous tient courage à dire mon, elle n'y tient vingt cent-quatorze ou konzer, qui est maximum possible. Seulement, en même temps, moi je compte, juste fait un petit remarque là, je vais. Moi aussi, moi t'y parle, me, bande dimon qui, qui vend quarante ou konzer. Moi, moi pas quoi ça rien pratique qui vraiment encouragez, mon, vous fait si vous prends votre konzer. Si dimon qui on a pour dire tout le l'an, il prenait l'opportunité de vous autres vendre konzer, il pas pouvoir, venir, un, un, un chose pour autres, pour autres services, autres konzer, je t'a, je t'a préféré accumuler et puis vendre. So, seulement, c'est, c'est qu'il a histoire, il nous besoin respecter, nous aussi, nous côté. Et puis, sorry, juste pour répondre ça à l'autre question, moi t'inbliais le côté negative leave balance. Honorable, systeming tout le temps en place pour faire si, dimon pas prendre en plus. Seulement, en même temps, là il y en a bonne caparé, s'il y en a un medical emergency, quelque chose comme ça, nous servir une discussion, il, il, on a question, question B six, sinon quoi, pour dire, il y a nécessité pour nous donner. Nous, nous assez simple, risque, définitivement avec bande employé local, risque immoèse, c'est c'est loi. Avec bande étrangé, then nous besoin faire si, pour dire, si peu prend konzer, qui peut exceed son leave balance, il peut prendre konzer local, il pas payer alors dehors, because then nous connaîtrons, il y a possibilité de pas payer tout net. So il, il manque quelque chose qui nous prend, il y a question, question B six. Aujourd'hui, moi je dis nous n'a pas, okay? Si vous avez dit nous, nous n'a pas, moving forward, c'est moyen quelque chose qui nous, qui nous vraiment manage bien possible. Merci.
Merci beaucoup, Monsieur. Honorable Gil, tu as une question?
Merci Monsieur Chair, bonjour CEO. Paris, on rightly said, il y a, il y a beaucoup de sous pour mettre tout staff, qui aujourd'hui, il y en a excessive à boe quarante des jours. Est-ce qu'il département H R in cost, ça bande konzer? À cause, Paris nous connaît, basé le salaire qui dimon il gagnait, then konzer plus c'est ça y est, est-ce qu'ils ont une fait ça pour connaître la habilité qui peut dormir là? Après, l' numéro deux, est-ce qu'il, zotin prend compte aussi pour dire, là ça bande konzer accumule, il a six staff qui quitter, vu qu'il la présent aujourd'hui, on a voyez documentation, est-ce qu'il veut dire pour payer zot ça bande konzer présent? Merci.
CEO.
Okay, merci Honorable. Ma, ma première bout avant. Okay, actually, juste quelquefois juste pour donner un petit peu contexte, parle mon dit, il y en a huit dimon total. Seulement, de ça huit dimon six, il parle bar cinquante. So, il, il pas, a very high number above sa quarante des jours. Et non non plan pour autres tout, pour faire des hand, embarquer en des salons là, lui-même. Il existe des nous qui, within seventy, seventy-two days, qui en plus, parle mon dit, il y en a moi-même, avec il y en a ça dimon qui, qui, qui travaille de finance avec, avec procurement. Le côté, le côté, est-ce qu'il nous besoin payer zot, bien six, as long qui tombe with une quarante des jours, which is the allowable amount, then définitivement ça pour, ça pour le cas. Il paraît dit, pour dire bande dimon qui within quarante des jours, nous parle courage, autres, plus autres prendre zot leave as well. Moi crois from, il y en a des perspectives, and from a financial perspective, le côté risque définitivement il y en a. Deuxième, le a perspective, well being sa staff as well, il y a quelque chose qui nous encourage à cause je parle ma sin, je, je, tout dimon pour Bernard, nous c'est encourage nous, nous mieux pour dimon prendre zot konzer. Seulement, up to forty-two days, nous pas car force dimon à cause, la loi il est zot accumule, up to forty-two days. So up to that point, définitivement, si elle, elle dit mon décide quitter, then, vous besoin payer zot for that leave. Again, nous non non car, derrière passer, que nous c'est encouragez mon, pour prendre, là une fois qu'ils ont une démission là, pour autres user as much of the leave as possible, c'est moyen pas quelque chose qui nous car force, c'est nous côté. And based on that, we, nous, nous, nous connaît, what is the financial liability that comes with it? So ma parle mon dit, for six out of the eight staff, il pas beaucoup, existe des nous qui intipé excessive pour le moment.
Pour le moment, à cause de réseau de l'arrestant?
Yes.
Okay. Mais seulement, dans le let, qu'on écrit, qu'on écrit, moi pique dans le let là hein. Une, une mention là pour dire, du son workload. Okay, présent là, nous te nous connaît workload, là nous connaît qui, on a gros workload. Et vous besoin bande staff, vous besoin bande dimon, zot pas à tous, zot peut faire, seulement quelque chose. Ou pas car donne, nous est garantie, vous même, probablement pour péter vous. Moi, moi pas les métodes à position pour donner nous est garantie. À cause il pas pour faire, le, il même pas pour faire, le, le saban, le saban ézernier. C'est moi, nous besoin avoir une solution pour ça. À cause Given qui ou peut faire, à cause on dit là, on dit pour dire, bien dit, on dit, for due to her current duties and workload, and that will apply to percy la majorité ou staff, qui one under field. Ou a qui predicament, donc met nous là-dedans? Ah, oui, si tu as chemin nous là-dedans. Okay, nous vous besoin retourne compte, le has a fait pour nous car c'est résoudre, à cause vous pas pour car joue donne nous est garantie, à cause vous pas pour car donne nous est garantie, et nous parle au par jour, les corps, il donne nous est garantie, qu'à pour, qu'on ne va pour car bill, là pas cause là il y a une pause qui besoin gagner fini. Ou bande staff qui besoin available pour finir, ou bien dis, zot pas prendre konzer, à cause zot prend konzer, pour finir poser. Pour le problème. Honorable Man, continue.
Merci Monsieur Chair. Monsieur, nous parle le paragraphe huit, et ça nous peut cause dit, delays in updating payroll records. Okay, Auditaires in noté, quatre employés, quatre staff, qui tenez pli de l'emploi, mais qui tient encore le payroll, mais, et bon quelque chose, seulement il était huit à puis, avait dit parce qu'il a un salaire. Alors c'est mon question, est-ce que capable, capable de nous, qui maisy, qui en place pour assurer qui peut au liège à tout moment? Merci Monsieur Chair.
Monsieur Honorable. CEO.
Merci Honorable pour vos questions. Honorable, qu'on peut documentation pour, pour vous autres? Nous payroll, pour le moment il y a jour, pour le moment, non non existe un staff actuelle, qui le payroll qui pas pay, qui pas pay draw salary. Ça s'affaire encore là, in démission net, il sont dernièrement, il y a expat. Nous, nous décidés freezé le payroll, payli à travers P P V, à cause nous besoin faire, guetter si, sans condition la case, okay? Si nous, si il y en a dommage, nous besoin call back, c'était l'asant. So nous besoin tirer le payroll pour ça dernièrement.
Étrangé ça non?
Étrangé, correct. Nous besoin tirer le payroll pour ça dernièrement. So l'arrestant, ou pour à le payroll lui-même, n'a pas personne qui pas pay draw salary. At the time, là, audit qui a fait, nous tient on, eh, eh, bon petit peu dimon, qui, well, il y en a quatre qui zotin pick-up, après ça, nous aussi on a plus. All of the, all of the documentation is there, que, le nous côté, à travers H R avec nos team accounts, nous update the payroll form, nous avons que tres jours. Souvent, pour nous, à pour dire tres jours, il fait ça, but parle on dit, bien, que zot arrête sa salaire, c'est moi, zot pas nécessairement delete ça dimon le payroll. Il pas, et quelque chose est en code nous. Lo sa request iclè, pour dire, zot supposey parait de salaire, and si ça dimon le payroll, zot fait juste premier bout, zot pas faire deuxième bout. Il y a quelque chose qui nous take-up exzot, c'est moyen, il prend quatre reminders pour ça dimon il a tiré. Et même ça, zot avoir aujourd'hui le payroll, n'a pas bande dimon. Seulement, il, il y en a certaine quelque chose qui nous nous car fait, le, le nous côté, pour paître, ça risque de dimon il gagne pay de les au papier travail, so ça nous fait si arrivé, c'est moi pour zot le payroll, il intipé à dehors nous contrôle.
Merci. Go ahead.
Merci Monsieur Chair. CEO, merci pour la réponse, à qui moi content, zot pas tu payes salaire. À connait des cas qui dimon, il loco, le payroll, il même fini quitter, paye salaire. On dit, nous tizin quatre, on dit là, tu fais l'exercice, nous a beaucoup pris encore. Et ce qu'a dit nous quatre tité, continue pick-up. Merci Monsieur Chair.
CEO.
Moi, je suis content, tu coup ça. Total, tiens on vingt-trois dimon, seulement, de ça vingt-trois, il y en quinze autres qui, à cause les, les actif former, tout bande réseau si gagné tabac, si a inclut bande facilities officer, de bande différents ministères, qui tient faute, il tient administrative rate the time, et nous tifé façon pour autres transfert back. So là, ça transfert t'arrivez, zot insister, rester le nous payroll, c'est moi encore le un, un zero salary. So vingt-trois total, nous tient on at, at one point in time, seulement, parle mon dit, aujourd'hui, non non existe n, et il y en a son réseau spécifique pour ça. Merci.
Merci Honorable Barisol.
Merci Monsieur Chair. Moi je compte un, demand avec Monsieur Cha, le temps causant relation avec ça vingt-trois, qui ou tient on a, là on dirait c'est nous y saine, y saine. Qui zot tienté, par exemple, à cause le staff étrangé, qui zot tienté ça vingt-trois, c'était étrangé, ou bien c'est c'est loi. Deuxièmement, le temps audit qui a fait, où tient on a ou cent-trente-deux staff, as December deux-mille-vingt-dix. Aujourd'hui, t'en nous peut cause, combien staff, où on a? Merci Monsieur Chair.
Merci Honorable Barisol.
Merci Honorable. Honorable, tiens on a aucun étrangé, de ça là-lis. Et le côté, quarante-six staff qui non non aujourd'hui, nous, non non cent-vingt-six aujourd'hui. Yeah, merci.
Combien où on a? Cent-vingt-six staff. On pique tout cent-vingt-six staff là. Okay. Honorable Man, continue.
Merci Monsieur Chair. Monsieur, nous allons le paragraphe onze, nous on peut goz, le payment goods and services. Auditaires in noté, trois transports, qui zot leave mileage, il pas à jour avec procédé. Alors c'est mon question, le sacciser mileage, est-ce qu'il on capable dans détail, le bonne procédé qui en place pour assurer qui mileage bien gagné recordé? Superbe Monsieur Chairman, le question, okay, le question, qui façon, qui zot capable à sicurer, qui zot check mileage enfin par semaine, il peut effective, pour paître aucun l'abri. À cause ça, vous dit mentionner, vous fait les info par semaine. Merci Monsieur Chair.
CEO.
Merci Honorable. Honorable, oui, mentionner pour dire nous faire les info par semaine, et moi, from a point of view practical, moi pas voir qui main nous car fait le plus souvent qui ça. Nous, par par les autres départements, qui en là, il y en a des trois transports, non non flite quatorze transports, nous côté. Et il gagne servi à quantité, obviously, à cause nature nous voies, transport, pique il servi cinq heures, six heures, deux journées, en là. Ce point dimon car bassisé, quelquefois, la faire la journée, tous les jours, pour reconnaître, toi là, il existe pas possible. Nous, c'est nous mieux pour nous faire les info par semaine, seulement ça tout on est arrivé. C'est moi, nous, nous faire si, si on a overspile, il fait après. Procédé qui non non place, on nous côté, il y a une qui nous c'est adopté, qui est un peu pratique, qui minimise risque, nous côté. Qui nous fait, nous, nous guider, nous guider pay weekly usage, mileage wise, par kilomètre, et nous, nous faire si, pour dire, il y a un except pattern, il va pay spike. Si nous avons red flag, tout nous bande transport il y a G P S. So non non fashion, then pour nous al guetter, si on a aucun l'abri qui arrive, si transport super servi après là, qui tient à pas permis, etc., etc. Seulement, il pas quelque chose qui, moi pour car dis zot, tous, tous les semaines, il a six exa G P S, il fait si, il gagne servi des instances que nous croyez, il y a l'abri, basé le bande, le bande red flag, si nous payons de mileage book, et basé le ça, ou bien, il a rapporté, then, then, then nous allez nous, nous, nous checker le G P S. Mais avec ressources qui non non, aujourd'hui, nous n'a pas transport supervisor, non non, c'est, c'est senior admin officer, qui madame Anna Rose, avec tous les autres responsabilités, il pas pratique pour nous, zou pas zou, check ça bande affaire. Merci.
Merci, Honorable Man, take the next question, please. Okay, après nous pour retourne là, moi pour donne bande mom, qui ne veut la merceuse, pour autres demandes, demandes question, après Honorable Man, pour dernière question qui là. Allez Honorable Man, il y en a, il y en a quelque chose, vous pouvez demander le sacciser, qu'on ne verra, Honorable Man, vous parlez à l'autre question. Le sadetesse balance avant, après nous pour retourne là, enfin, enfin plusieurs, à cause nous paye, nous besoin, en, 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 disait quarante-cinq. Honorable Man?
Okay, merci Monsieur Chair. Moi parle fixa sept, yeah? Mais ça nous paye le paragraphe trois. Auditaires in aussi noté, qui en a l'instance que zot fixa sept, register par gain bien update. Ça qui tient, ressort ici, c'était interactive, smart TV, soixante-quinze pouces, qui tient gagné recordé des fois, et ça tient à valer cent-vingt-neuf-mille roupies, neuf-cent-cinquante roupies. Et aussi trois transports parmi les autres, patting gagné fait rentrer le register. Alors CEO, qui maisy qui en place pour assurer qui tout bande asset, qui zot in a stay, il gagnait clé dans zot fixa sept register. Après le question, Monsieur Chair, dans, dans, dans l'autre la réponse, on t'indique, qui zot pay à l'update zot fixa sept, register. Mais quand est-ce que zot pour capable partage à sa register avec Auditaires, à cause Auditaires peut faire, paye demande, merci Monsieur Chair.
Merci Honorable Man. Monsieur Cha.
Merci Honorable. Honorable procédé, il a, il procédé, il pas diffère avec les autres landois. Deux-mille-vingt-dix, il y a l'année qui, nous tine fait que former, comment est, est l'asance. Nous tient à quatre tété asset, qui nous peut prendre, qui tient intipé, papier, pas à tourne, spécialement, ça register en ordre. Code gouvernement local, code l'éducation, all of that, nous tifé, fait, bien, un propos audit, le toi bande asset avant, nous tifé ban nous. Tiens on a bande lapses, là tu peux faire entrer de register. Moi car, confirmé, pour dire register, il complète, il en place, il a oversight nous côté, pour dire, nous pas tiens corché. Il tient un box pour nous take, nous take, nous faire si nous met nous register en ordre. Seulement, définitivement, quelque chose qui désuit ça, ça semaine, by demain, nous n'avaché avec, avec the Auditers Office. Le côté procédé, il même parle mon dit, nous servit fixa sept register qui, qui a donné par, par, par diaciti. Il y en a pas mal problème avec as well, il y en a peu challenges, il pas the most flexible program to use. Quand c'est quelque chose là-dedans qui, il limite un type, le côté bande description, bande quelque chose comme ça. Seulement, il y a quelque chose qui, 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 qui nous fait servi. So, pour le moment, nous en ordre, nous procédé clair, comment quelque chose y entrer, il, il gagne, il gagne mettez le, le register, il gagne donné son numéro, il gagne mettez le, le ça, le ça l'équipement. Merci.
Okay, merci beaucoup CEO. Moi, moi vous passe avec les autres mom, vous demandez bonne question, que je annonce, nous pour commencer avec Honorable Barisol, then Honorable Gil, then Honorable Gabriel. Honorable, mon donne, il s'est demandé beaucoup question, on attend, il y a valable question, allez, après moi, on va finir avec la dernière question. Juste pour, pour faire référence, regardant vraiment telisant hein. On fait si, on fait un combat, qu'on vienne avec tout bande document, pour, pour nous. Bien, adhésion, on fait un combat, pour garder qui bande document qu'on besoin, mais né. On pas responsabilité, ou l'organisation qui va ça. Très bien. Honorable Barisol.
Merci Monsieur Chair. Moi t'en vais ici retourne là, si c'est qui Monsieur Chan cause on avec transport. Il dit il y en a quatorze transports, de son flite, moi t'en vais demander si bande transport, il poussilla, ou bien bande transport lui. Et après moi, je compte a demander, le l'autre question qui Honorable George une demander, en relation avec ça trois transports, qui partie dans y enregistré, la zot fixa sept, si forme partie, ça quatorze transports comme cause là. Merci Monsieur Chair.
Monsieur Barisol. Monsieur Cha.
Merci, Honorable. Quatorze transports pour nous-même, il y en a, un, un transport qui nous peut louer pour le moment? Trois, trois, encore trois qui nous peut louer, ça y séparer. C'est moi, ça y aussi à cause, non non c'était breakdown, le c'était nous bande transport, so il ben short term renter. Et ça trois transports, oui, il forme partie ça quatorze, qui aujourd'hui, le register oui.
Honorable Barisol, satisfait? Thank you. Honorable Gil.
Merci. Question très simple. Ça quatorze transports, moi il y en explique nous, pratiquement, il difficile pour car, côtole le mileage. Est-ce qu'il peut-être on n'a pas plan, feature, pour car, bouder un système qui interacte ça G P S? Ou pas pour besoin dimon, manuel lié à la saisir? Et tout bande mouvement, le ça G P S, ça système, il pick-up tout car, this year printout, ou comme. Il est saint thought, merci.
Merci, Honorable, Gil.
Merci, Honorable. Honorable, système, il y a place, sa système GPS, ou cab print ben, ben data, ben historical data of the route, c'est moi, parle mon dit. Moi, moi, parle dit, nous pas cab manage, pas cab tracks a manage, mon dit, c'est à cause volume, en là, pour assister, reconcilier. Il, il vint un peu difficile. Et, et même, même quand serait resté, le print saban rapport. Parle mon dit, ça, quand c'est trip qui gagne fait des semaines, pour un transport, il y a quantité. So, il, moi, papy dit, papy gagne fait, ou bien, il pas cab gagne fait. Il existe quelquefois, pour faire, il, le, le niveau consistant, qui vine un peu challenge, le côté pour le moment. Non, 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 un, un demande qui nous peut faire under, under media review, pour nous gagner transport supervise, à cause ça fleet qui non, non. Non, non, il pas, c'est sa question, manage mileage, aussi, manage transport lui-même, le côté de mechanical side. Pour faire si, pour dire, quelque chose peut bien gagner fait, nous pas regarder là, le, le maintenance. Là, nous t'acap, faire ben quelque chose un peu preventive avant. So, non, non, elle est en shop, pour nous gagner un peu plus ressources, qui cab aide nous avec ça. Seulement, en même temps, up to now, ressources, une toute concentrée, le bon ressources qui directement involve avec poser à cause limitation.
Pourquoi on fait ça, ou pas on fait ça ?
Quoi ?
Ça qui, ça qui demande.
Non, nous, nous, nous préfère, c'est moi, parle mon dit, pas consistant.
Ok, Honorable, vous pouvez, vous pouvez répondre ça, finalement, on a le transport supervise. So, go on, Honorable, Gabriel.
Yeah, merci, Monsieur Chair. CEO, quickly, just don't know, après, pour être à P six, le total assets, as a currently. And then, est-ce qu'il y a aucun asset qui peut considérer write off avec ministère finance, moi, quelque chose comme ça. Ça donne un petit détail là, merci.
Thank you, Honorable, CEO.
Sorry, Honorable, là, vous avez dit total assets, because, because the quantity.
The value. Value of man assets.
Franchement, je, moi, 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 pour n'a pas, il total d'appel. Moi, pour n'a pas the total of that, le mon côté.
And I will run, if you want, no.
Well, il, il y a quelque chose qui, moi, car, t'alle, il fait, fait autre gagner des suites before the end of the day. Seulement, it's, it's all on here. Seulement, accord, juste pour, juste pour disz autres, even when it comes to Paris, parle mon dit, sa programme lui-même. Il y en a son, son système depreciation as well, qui pas nécessairement the, the correct depreciation value, seulement. Il, il, il y a quelque chose qui automatique da système. So, si se permet, moi, moi, faire un petit exercice, pour faire des informations. Avant, moi, donnez un, 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 un valait qui par, qui par bien. Et puis, le côté, si nous paye write off, oui, définitivement, il y a procédé qui continue est, en, en write off. Seulement, nous peut expecter, là, nous peut bousser, bon, pendant mai, so moi prochaine. On est un petit peu à sept, especially, ben, vieux furniture, qui probably, pas ni pour cab, make the trip sortir en ville pour Belong, vous cassez on the way. Saban qui là, probably, nous pour write off avant.
Là, où, là, où fait, ou trip sortir en ville pour Belong, moi, je vous parle de, contacté. Pour, pour démonter furniture, parle moi de Belong.
Nous, nous, pas envisager pour nous démonter furniture, nous pour vous lire Paris.
Ok, bon, moi, 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 on a, moi, on a des trois questions pour finir avec, le, c'est quelque chose qu'on dit, une observation, moi, il fait. Premièrement, on demande au document, ou ça pour infrastructure support, qui ben dimon, qui peut travailler avec vous. Et autres ban salaire, et autres ban allowances, pour présenter, pour dire, each one is best competitively, les autres qualifications, les autres skills que j'en a. Ok, mon go through, brièvement, document, on demande. Moi, pas vouloir grand problème avec ça, mais c'est moi, le calculation au livre, ok. Alors, il y a un problème avec ça, c'est à cause, we, nous comprenons situation, des, mon dit, nous, tout dit, mon, il comprend situation, l'organisation. Il parle dit, il devait gagner quatre blanches pour faire ça qui, ou, ou en vie, en relation que la loi. Ou besoin comply. So, besoin mettez les cornes, des saban affaire conserver. Et pourtant ça, ok, malgré qui nous comprenons situation, à cause, des, moi, je vais calculation, il y a une calculation qui diffère de cette circonstance. À cause, on est fait, là, il a dit, mon, il peut écouter nous là, et qui paye, c'est un concern, vis-à-vis, ben, calculation qui ou peut donner nous. Moi, pour parler de ça, qui dit, mon, il peut écouter nous, moi, parle plutôt concentrer l'information que nous, on a là. So, t'avais nécessaire, qui ou get ça en ordre, à cause, il pas, il pas pour faire sens, ou get away avec les autres pas capables, pas besoin. Nous comprenons, ou, ou, il besoin le site, on a ban poser, besoin finir poser, on a l'exigence, mais, ou besoin comply. Ça y est, deuxièmement, regarding mileage, encore une fois, aussi, nous comprenons. Où ban site, il all over my, on a différents poser, où ban officier, busy the weekend, the dimanche, préfère poser, etc. Oui, mais c'est moi, still, il parle dit, pour dire, you get to get away, moi, pas dit get away, non, il y a, mais c'est moi, you have to comply. How you comply, qui strict, tu mettes en place, you have to talk to government, to find out what best your structure. À cause, on a constant demand pour délivrer. Mais c'est moi, the same time, ça mette à constater, le ressource. Et ressource qui may, il gagne servi, besoin en lire avec bon procédé qui là. So, you will have to tackle that. So, nous, vous come back to your own, ça issue après. Troisième issue, qui m'en le voilà avec pour moi. Ok, le rapport d'audit général lui-même, il au passe dix-neuf rapport d'audit général. Et ça concerne under utilization of capital expenditure budget by one point one billion. Now, le ministère finance, il venu, il peut répondre sa question, ou pour gagner vitesse, pour venir avec ministère finance, aussi, pour répondre sa bonne question. À cause, ça concerne spécifiquement délivri, pour l'organisation, et derrière délivri, gagne affecté par la quantité conserver, qui ben dimon, il prend, la quantité mileage, qu'ils ont, ils comme ça, les autres, à le ban site. Comment ? So, if you need more resources, less resources, realize, realignment of resources, so that to deliver, because the capex budget was underutilized, was only seventy one percent of original budget, or three nine one point. Après, il est revised, forty seven percent of the revised was used. So, il y a la bonne question que nous pouvons là avec là. Otherwise, Monsieur Charles, we want to thank you for efforts committed, pour vous fournir cette information. Et on peut pas, ou le corps, bien pour vous demander, vous pose la bonne question. Il parle dit, tout ce ban, il pense qu'on donne, nous, nous accepter, nous pas, mais c'est moi, nous, nous noté, pour dire, on fait un effort internel, les bon staff, ils font un effort internel, ils pour mettent ça en contrôle. Nous pour aller là, avec C E C infrastructure agency, il disait cinquante-dix. Donc, l'autorité ici poser commence. Aux aires. So, il peut en asse, huit minutes, Rick. So, nous, vous besoin, nous peut extendre, Rick, par, avec l'état, qu'on gagne beau matin. Par, après, n'avoir rentré. Aux aires dix, ok, pour, pour, pour moi, à dix minutes, qui nous paye dit beau matin. Merci beaucoup, et merci pour, et nous regains ça dix minutes, qui nous paye dit beau matin, Monsieur Charles. Marcher tout bon sens avec l'organisation, et où les staff aussi qui là, on a des autres merci, et on va en, en, en SBC, merci beaucoup.